From the picture, it looks like Anthony is definitely in the right place to be.
You're on mute, Anthony.
I only wish this was an authentic background. Stuck down in my work dungeon.
You look like you've got all the bases covered according to your fluids.
How's everybody doing this evening?
We're doing pretty good, I think.
I think we've, we've got the two of you at City Hall. We got two at City Hall, we've got three of us remotely. I think we've got a quorum. Were we expecting to have Jim join us or Gabe?
Jim is not going to be able to make it and I do not have any confirmation for Gabe.
Okay, then we just give another minute and a half, see if he can make it, otherwise we'll get started. We've got a fun evening ahead of us.
Sound tired.
Tonight, we have a work session. Do we have a standard meeting here? And if so, I realize I only downloaded the eighty-four pages associated with the work session.
You are correct, it's just a work session.
Okay, so we have a meeting, excellent. Well, we've got quorum and I don't think that's even necessary because they're not voting on anything. So if we want to get started, I'm happy to do so. Amy, if you want to do a brief roll call.
Your hand. Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Brandon Madrid. Yeah. Commissioner Terrell.
Yeah.
Commissioner Nordstrom.
Here.
And planning commissioner Chair Stewart.
I'm here and I see Gabe Morales has joined us as well.
Dave, you are here too.
I'm here, sorry, was having Zoom issues.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Bandy is asking.
All right, with our formal attendance called, I will turn the microphone over to Mr. Jenkins, who is going to present the residential R2 code amendment discussion, starting at page three in our evening agendas.
All right, thank you Chair, good evening, everybody. So, Amy, can I share my screen so I can pull up a PowerPoint, please?
One second. Yep.
All right, can you all see the PowerPoint?
Yep.
Perfect, one second, let me. Okay, so a lot of this is going to be pretty similar to what I presented last time, with a few additions based on the additional research and some discussions with the developer and from the discussions with the planning commission last time. But since it's been about two months since we had that last discussion, I'm going to go over some of the same stuff, just as a reminder of what we talked about then and kind of what the basis for this code amendment is and why we're looking at moving forward and what kind of impacts it could have on the city and future development. So, again, we're talking mainly here about attached housing in Carlton, specifically in the R2 zone. So we're looking at the residential two, which is the medium, the medium density residential zone, Carlton, which is mostly intended for a mixture of single-family, middle housing and duplex townhome, small lot, single-family type housing. So we're looking at that today. So again, just to reiterate the background, we discussed this last time, this hasn't changed, but we're talking about middle housing, which is defined in statute as duplexes, triplexes, podplexes, townhomes and cottage clusters. We're not really talking about cottage clusters today, but mostly looking at townhomes and it's really an important part of that mixture, that middle connecting tissue between the large lot, single-family detached housing and the apartment-style housing. So it's particularly important in small cities that, well, small and mid-sized cities, where, you know, the cities may not want to grow at a tremendous density, specifically in the middle density residential zones, but want to provide that connection between the single-family detached and the multifamily apartment-style housing. So again, the impetus for this, or not the impetus, but the background on middle housing comes primarily from House Bill 2001, which is in 2019, which required specifically medium and large cities, so cities above 10,000 people, which obviously Carlton is not, to amend zoning codes to allow for middle housing in all residential districts. That was a pretty controversial bill in some places because it kind of got the moniker of outlawing single-family zoning, which wasn't fully the case, but that was kind of the way a lot of people viewed it and that was the effect of the housing. But for Carlton, really, we're not looking at doing that. We're just looking at allowing middle housing in a more practical sense in the city's R2 zones. And the reason for that is because while the city's code technically permits those uses, it's really only in name only. So really, it supports townhomes, but the dimensional standards don't really practically allow for further development. And the reason why this came up, as far as why are we doing this now, is because there's been some interest from a developer in subdividing a large R2 tract of land, which I think we're all aware of where that's located. And staff decided we wanted to be proactive in making sure that we could work with the planning commission and the developer to make sure that when that application comes in, we're seeing a mixture of housing, which is what the planning commission and city council has been pretty adamant about wanting to see in future subdivisions. So instead of just seeing single-family, they want us, you know, you and the city council want to see that mixture of single-family detached, single-family attached duplexes, that kind of thing. So that's the backgrounds for why we're looking forward to this. Again, just running through the benefits of attached housing affordability, obviously, just straightforward market-based information here. Attached dwellings are smaller homes, which are typically located on smaller lots, which means they're typically more affordable. An efficient land use pattern, a big part of Oregon's land use law and land use program is the UGB, making sure that urban uses stay within urban growth boundaries. So efficient land use patterns with slightly higher densities, especially for single-family or middle housing, reduces the need for sooner, you know, quicker need for a potential housing-based UGB expansion, which is obviously a big deal in Carlton in particular and all around the state. But Yampoe County obviously is a big, you know, farm country and wineries and all that, those kind of rural uses that, you know, we don't want to have the urban uses encroach on those rural uses until they absolutely have to. So encouraging this middle density-type housing plays a big role in efficient use of land, rather than just building these 8,000-foot, single-family, big home lots that we've seen in the past in Carlton. Along those same lines, low to high-density transition, this provides that nice buffer, as I mentioned, between the large lot, single-family residential detached housing and the apartment style, which maybe, you know, I've heard from a few different members of the planning commission and city council, maybe is not always the preferred type of housing in these big apartment-style units in Carlton. So this provides a nice middle ground where we still get that, you know, more affordable, slightly higher-density pattern, while not going all out into, you know, big-city-style apartment housing. And then lastly, just the diversity of housing types, rather than having these, you know, just little bucks, you know, just same, same, same subdivisions over and over again, that all look the same. We're seeing, going to see more of a variance in housing types, which is something that the city has expressed interest in having. So those are really the benefits. A little bit of background on the R2, again, I know I've gone over this, this one, it's been a while, so I want to make sure that everyone's, you know, up to date on the R2. The uses per 17.22.020, attached single-family dwellings with the maximum of two consecutively attached townhome units are permitted subject to site design review. But like, I would say, majority of small-city codes, the code itself, the dimensional standards of the code do not actually practically allow for these units to be developed in a way that makes financial sense for both the developer and the homeowner. So why is this? Well, again, pretty straightforward. When the lot sizes are forced to be larger, developers have to make up that money in a different way, which means the housing costs go up and the housing sizes go up, which means that the townhomes are just larger, but they don't have the same amenities as single-family detached housing, which means there's no real incentive for either the developers to build them or for potential homeowners to buy them. Because if you're getting a large lot townhome, then why would you not just buy a home with a yard? The advantage of townhomes is often that they're cheaper and that they are a smaller space for people that don't need that extra space. So once you take that away, there's not really any incentive for homeowners or homebuyers to buy or for developers to develop. So that's why we're looking at making these changes on the micro, you know, level, a little easier, so that developers have this incentive to provide the housing variety that the cities asked for over the past few years, at least while I've been the city's planner. So that's one of the things that we're looking at allowing here. Next slide. So one of the things that was requested at the last work session back in April is that staff go to the developer and find some, or ask the developer to provide some very preliminary outlines of what a potential townhome block could look like in a potential subdivision application. So we did that and this is, the next few slides are going to be screenshots. These are also included in your packet in a little more detail and on larger size. So I'm sure you've had a, you know, had the chance to look at them already, but just wanted to walk through these. This is just a standard layout of what we'd be looking at here in color. So you have the townhomes, the maximum of two connected, that is not changing. We're not doing the row houses, we're just doing the pods of two within a side yard, probably about 10 feet in between the two of them. You have the shared driveways with the sidewalk and the landscape strip. And then, you know, all the normal development that would be required as part of a subdivision. And I just want to emphasize, just for the purposes of tonight, we're not really discussing, you know, streets or sidewalks or anything like that, that'll all be reviewed at the time of a pre-application meeting, which, you know, we'll have eventually and at a future subdivision application. So I just want to focus the conversation for now on the lots themselves and what we're looking at doing as far as the amendments. The second slide that they provided was, it's the same image, but just it shows the lot measurements to kind of indicate what kind of lot sizes would be feasible for this type of development. So what we're seeing here is that the interior lots are about 25 feet by around 115 to 116-ish feet, so 100 to 110, 115 feet, depending on the individual lot, which is around, you know, 2,500 feet per lot, which is what had originally actually been proposed last time. So that works out and aligns with what I had suggested as the starting point for these amendments back in April. They also sent an example of a mock-up of what these townhome pods would look like. So this is, again, this was included in your packet, but it's just a kind of a blown-up image of the mock-up that was sent. Again, what we're looking at here is two attached townhomes with a shared driveway, a side yard on either side, and then a rear yard, which you can't see in the back. So functionally, again, they're just smaller, single-family homes in pods of two. So we're not really raising, you know, any kind of significant densities. We're just keeping, allowing for a different type of townhome. So obviously, these townhomes could be smaller, they could be larger, but this is roughly what we'd be looking at in terms of, you know, future development under the provisions of what would be an amended code. I know you won't be able to see this very well, but this is also in your packet. It's just the more specific detailed look at an architectural elevation of the proposed buildings from the side and the front. So those are what the developer sent, as far as, you know, what was requested by the planning commission for this week. So that hopefully gives you a little bit of a better idea of what we'd be looking at. Again, just want to emphasize that we're not looking at row houses, we're looking at pods of two and that code is, unless the planning commission desires, will not be changed for the R2 zone.
Can I ask a quick question, Kyle? What is the difference between a row house and a townhome?
So practically nothing. They're the same thing. A row house is more, at least how I think of a row house and how they're commonly thought of, is more, you know, if you were to go to New York City or something like that, and you just have those, you know, maybe 20 in a row with no yards, just all connected. So row houses are townhomes that are just all in a row, essentially, is a good way.
And so what we're looking at today is only two.
Two. So, yes.
This change won't allow any more than pods of two.
Right. So the current code only allows two and we are not proposing to change that. So just to go back over some of the proposed, I'm sorry, it was.
My picture is divided on the two sheets and it was hard to tell until we showed that front row picture. So if I understand correctly, each unit will have a single garage and a parking space in front of that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I needed to come. Thank you.
And then again, this is just kind of a preliminary sketch of something that we could see, it could change, but that's most likely what this particular developer would look at building for this upcoming subdivision. So again, whoops, need to do that. So the main dimensional standards, this is what we discussed last time, I haven't changed anything here, after doing a little bit of research and speaking with state housing policy analysts as long, as well as doing some of the, a deep dive into some of the literature that I sent out. The recommendations haven't really changed. So we're looking at 2,500 square feet for, this is a minimum, so it could be higher than that, but a minimum lot size for interior lots and then a 4,000-foot minimum lot size for, or square foot lot size for corner lots, so that's lot size. Lot width, which is the other main kind of restrictive standard that we're looking at here, currently 50 feet. So we're looking at changing that to 25 and 40 respectively for interior and corner lots, which would allow for more classic townhome-style development. 50 feet doesn't really make any sense for a townhome because that's just adding additional land, which drives up the price of the actual home itself because the developer won't be able to have as many lots within the subdivision. So that's really just the common sense, market-based reason for these amendments, as well as just, again, smaller lots equal smaller homes, which are typically more affordable. Corner lot setback, this is something that's just a suggestion. It can, you know, typically, the reason for a corner lot setback, what's required is that corner lots obviously have frontage on two streets, that's why they're corner lots. So typically, for a single-family home, we require a 15-foot street-side setback on either side. And the reason for that is because single-family homes can be oriented to different directions. We want to make sure that there's, you know, there's, you know, if someone had a balcony on the side of their, or a porch on the side of their home, that they would have that setback or they would be able to have that setback between their yard and their home and the right-of-way. For townhomes, obviously, it's a little different because they're very strictly oriented to one of the two streets, so it doesn't make quite as much sense to have a super strict side setback. So the proposal here is to reduce that just five feet to 10 feet to allow for a little more flexibility, but that's not necessarily something that is required or, you know, I guess, a game changer as far as being able to build or not. Again, it's about adding that additional flexibility on the micro level for these types of homes. Lot coverage for buildings is currently 35%, so we're proposing, you know, upping that to 50%. As you can see in the preliminary plans that were submitted, there's, these specific homes probably aren't going to have any issue meeting that lot coverage requirement already. But again, just adding more flexibility if there were to be smaller lots in the future. This is a minimum, not a maximum, or a maximum, not a minimum. So that's what we're looking at in terms of lot coverage. And same for combined building and parking lot coverage, which is currently at 65 and is proposed to be at 80. We could certainly lower that, we could keep it where it is. It just depends on where the planning commission wants to go on that one. And then lastly, I just wanted to summarize some of the stuff I had in the memo. I know it was a lot of information and I attached a lot of kind of the planning literature that went into the research on this. So just for clarification, I already mentioned this a little bit earlier and I think at our last meeting, but the way I approached these amendments is that we are not changing the maximum density in the zone. So the maximum density in the zone is staying at 10 dwelling units per acre. So what does that mean? Well, it means that no matter how many, or what we do to the individual lot dimensional standards, that density still needs to be met. And the idea behind that is that by looking at it from a macro level and having the cap, the cap at the density level, we're allowing more flexibility at the individual lot level while still making sure that the density doesn't rise past what it's already mandated to be. So say the developer had 10 acres of land, they could not build townhomes on every 10, every acre of that land at the dimensional standards that are permitted, because that would well exceed that 10-acre density cap. So instead, what, you know, they'll be required to do is do a mixture. So they'll have to do townhomes or they'll be able to do townhomes in some and detached in others to stay below that density cap. Now, obviously, if the planning commission wanted to raise that density cap, which I didn't really get a sense of, that was something that you all wanted to do, at least at this point, that can certainly be done. But the idea here is that we're not raising the density, we're just making it easier to have a mixture of housing types within a certain subdivision. So for instance, using this, you know, 10-acre example, again, we could have, you know, one out of, you know, maybe 10 acres with four blocks or something like that. So maybe one out of the floor blocks would be townhomes, the other three blocks would be, you know, your classic, single-family detached-type housing. So that's the anticipated impact of what these amendments would be, again, making it easier on the individual level while making sure the city is still comfortable with that maximum density. So that's the main point I wanted to emphasize here. But secondly, again, we just discussed the row houses, this isn't changing that. Maximum of two consecutive will remain in place. And then lastly, this doesn't change the infrastructure need or anything like that, including detention or any other existing code requirements, this isn't having any effect on that. If, you know, there's a subdivision application submitted and the city engineer says, hey, we don't have appropriate infrastructure for this, the planning commission can, you know, condition issuance, building permits upon, you know, provision of that infrastructure. So that will help us avoid situations like we had with JR2, where the final plat was conditioned at the time of infrastructure, but building permits were still allowed to move forward and we had to obviously go back and revise that. So this is getting out in front of that in terms of, we're going to be very clear as far as when Gordon, you know, tells us what infrastructure is available and what the capacity is, the applicant will know that upfront at the pre-app stage and can either move forward with asking for a conditional approval or wait until that infrastructure is actually available to submit their application. Usually, I imagine they'll probably submit and request conditional approval, but the point is that the infrastructure still needs to be in place before building permits can be issued. So nothing on that front is changing, now, street scape requirements or anything like that. So those are the three main things that I just wanted to emphasize that are not changing, so that we don't get into, you know, concerns about density and that kind of stuff moving forward and we can kind of focus more on the actual standards themselves. So yeah, that's all I had. I'm happy to answer any additional questions, either based on the presentation or on the memo or any of the material that was presented by the developer and said to have a little conversation here and hopefully move forward.
I see, and that's got her hand raised.
I just have a comment and I want to thank you, Kyle, on page 12, right after the grid, you should know about avoiding utility easements. I like the user's guide about the city may require fire suppression systems. That way, we don't have to have that conversation again, so thank you for that inclusion.
I'm sorry, I couldn't really hear that, but I assume it was talking about the.
At the bottom of the grid, note, always avoid utility easements when building your property lines and right underneath that, the user's guide, the city may require fire suppression sprinkler systems. Thank you for including that, so that we don't have to have that discussion again. Appreciate it.
Suzie.
So Kyle, one of the incentives I feel like is important for approving this is to put off having to move that urban growth boundary. But I'm confused, if we don't change any density requirements with this, are we still, does that still, it seems like that doesn't achieve that goal of not having to move, of putting off having to move the urban growth boundary later, is that correct?
So that's a good, that's a good question. And I guess my answer to that would be that developers, at least the developers that we have spoken with, have been willing to look at townhomes as a method to achieve a little bit more density, whereas the 10 units per acre is the maximum, right? So they have the ability to go below that, within that, I think, I don't know if there's a, I forget if there's a bottom range right now, but what we've seen in the past, obviously, is that they have just gone with the largest lots that they can make the most money off of, because they're developing these larger lots. So technically, yes, they could still do that, but what this does is allows the city to have a conversation with them and says, you know, say, hey, you know, you have this option now, it's a feasible option for you, the city would like to see it, will you work with us on this? And not all developers will, I guess, and that's something probably to discuss, I think, with the upcoming comp plan amendments and code change as far as density changes in each zone. But yes, practically, you're right that this doesn't really change that obligation, it just makes it easier to build at the top end of that density range rather than at the bottom end.
So we're incentivizing them to do the right thing? Yeah. Okay, and so then, I just wanted to make a comment about that, on working with the envisioned Carlton consistently, when I hear citizens talking about what they want to see in Carlton is, most of them want to slam the gate and don't let anybody move in, you know, as soon as they've gotten here, which, whatever, but it seems like this would be, and I think there's very, very low understanding that we have to, by state land use goals, require us to move that urban growth boundary as soon as we filled up our housing. So I think, two things, I think it's important for the public to know that there's that requirement, because I think people get really confused and they get really upset that we're allowing more development without that understanding. And to really make it clear to the public that this is a way that we can put off doing that state obligation to move the urban growth boundary when it's full.
Right.
Um, hands one.
That's all I had to say.
Bob, go for it.
I just got one, but I just, in an acre, how many square feet are in an acre? I don't know that.
What's that? I'm sorry. I, I, I'm in trouble.
In one acre, how many square feet?
Um, about forty-three and a half thousand.
So ten of them would be four thousand. Okay, I got it. That's all I need to know.
And I have another question, Kyle. You had said in your opening remarks that we were not looking at cottage developments at this point. Why is that?
Um, we are not, well, so that's not currently um, in the code. Um, so the reason for, I guess the motivation for doing these amendments now before the um, you know, the larger scale amendments that the consultant is leading is because uh, Shannon and I kind of saw this as a, as a way to make sure that before, we, we, we have, you know, like, you know, blatantly we have a, a developer who's interested in coming in. So we wanted to um, make sure the city, you know, had the code in place to um, you know, make it so that we didn't see that same single family large lot housing that was, that was complained about with JR two. Um, so this is kind of just a, uh, a small element of it. I think that with the cottage clusters, I've done a number of code amendments just in the last year, not a number, but one or two in the last year. Uh, with cities that have looked at cottage cluster standards. Um, and I definitely recommend the city do that as well. Um, that just requires a little more um, uh, just an entirely different set of amendments for cottage clusters, which I would again, highly recommend the city look at with, with the consultant, but just isn't really uh, part of what is being proposed with the townhome specifically, if that makes sense.
Can I just bring this to the table and the city managers here? Because I'm a senior and most of the people that I've talked to are seniors. Um, and you did a beautiful job with including um, these ones in Salem and uh, because they know people that live in those. This would be a lovely way to transition people already in Carlton, who are looking to downsize from their homes as they age into a smaller self-sufficient sanctuary cottage. And I think this would be a really ideal way to support our seniors to stay independent and to stay in town to be able to downsize into something small and manageable. So I would really urge the inclusion of that in any future developments. And I think the market for that will be off the chart. So depending, you know, just putting forth the people that have talked to me about it. You're like McMinnville has these, all these other town, you know, and you did a great job including these. Why isn't Carlton? I think Carlton definitely should.
Uh, I, with respect to a comment, I'm of the general agreement. I think staff is designed, uh, you know, the, the role for staff is to advise us of these things. This is the first step, but this will all be passed up to those who are accountable uh, within our community. So I think this has done a very good job of advising us. And uh, what is important for anybody in the community who's listening is that, you know, our job is to incorporate what we're seeing from long-term trends. And um, you know, if there are questions, if there are people who watch this after the fact and have input, the next phase will be putting this before the city councils. We encourage you to, you know, remain civically engaged and involved. And if you have additional comments uh, beyond what the planning commission is doing, um, to pursue that with your elected representatives or excuse me, your um, city council representatives as well as the mayor. What are our next steps at this point, Mr. Jenkins? Will it be uh, calling for uh, uh, the matter to have a first reading with us?
No, so um, this is just a work session. So we are um, obviously this, if you have no specific concerns or further discussion about kind of what, what was proposed as far as the specific numbers. Um, what you would do is, is make a motion to direct staff to prepare um, a set of development code amendments as indicated in, in the uh, the staff memo, which would then be a type four process or type D process, which would then go through the planning commission, a public hearing for the planning commission, and then final approval at the city council level. So um, it would, you know, what you'd see at that first planning commission hearing would be pretty much what you see here, but just in um, hearings level uh, or hearings ready amendment form. Um, and obviously the, the uh, property owners would be noticed and, and the state would be noticed and everything would happen in accordance with, with uh, uh, the legislative amendment procedures. So again, then you would, the, the planning commission would review those amendments, uh, recommend a decision to the planner to the city council, and then the city council would um, approve via, via ordinance. So the
I would be ready for that. So
to, to provide additional cover.
I would be ready and would welcome a, a motion from uh, any of the fellow commissioners to pursue the, you said type four delta?
I can just say a, a legislative amendment for the development code amendments as proposed in the staff memo.
Floor is open for a motion from anybody. If Jennifer doesn't have any comments or Gabe as well. Mr. Jenkins, do you need it formally stated or can she?
I, I can read it and you can say so motioned or something like that, if that would be easiest.
Perfect.
And I would make a motion.
Would you like me to, to read it out for you or?
Sure, why not?
Okay. So it'd just be, I move to direct staff to uh, prepare a uh, set of development code amendments um, as indicated in the uh, staff memo included in tonight's packet. Uh, moving forward with amendments to the city's uh, R two uh, zone development code. A portion of the development code.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Uh, Ms. uh, Amy Amerson, could you please give us a call down? I believe we're gonna all be in approval.
Uh, Commissioner Graham, how do you vote?
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Stewart, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Nordstrom, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Churel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Morales, how do you vote?
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Kennedy, how do you vote?
Hi.
And unanimously. Excellent, Mr. Jenkins. We very much appreciate your time and effort here. I know that
I, I appreciate, uh, I appreciate you guys being willing to move forward with this. It's, it's surprisingly rare in a lot of, a lot of rural cities to take initiative like this. I think it's, I commend you all for, for, you know, being proactive with this.
I just want to
We, we dropped the five G stuff and we dropped the five G so we can deal with R two.
I, I commend you Kyle. Um, this was really nicely prepared.
Great. I see, and raised from our city manager here, Shannon.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time tonight. I wanted to thank the commission for listening and giving such a thorough discussion to tonight as Kyle mentioned. Um, we had a meeting and we wanted to proactively address the concern that there would be development that would come in. Um, while we're doing these comprehensive code amendments and also the development code amendments. And so I appreciate you entertaining our thoughts and reports tonight. Uh, obviously this does not discount any changes in the future through the comprehensive plan or development code update, should you decide to make additional changes. But uh, I wanted to thank you for that. Um, I also wanted to let you know, you'll hear about this a little more in detail in July, but the council and I are going to be asking the commission for some help. Uh, we, if you viewed the uh, council packet last month, you saw our work plan that we've been updating for the last couple of months. And with everything on our plates and everything that we want to get to, we're trying to figure out how to say yes to more things um, and not say no, but not stress out everybody. And so we're going to be asking the commission for some help in looking at the codes related to our parks and what is currently in and required for somebody putting in green space and what may be missing, like standards for parks equipment. Um, and so we're gonna be asking the commissioners to look at our code and summarizing what they see and don't see as far as parks. Additionally, we're asking that you take a look at the park's master plan and summarize where we're at at that master plan, what we've been able to achieve as a city and where we still need to go. Uh, that'll help us as we continue to move through the comprehensive plan and the development code update to make some of those changes that we want to see as a city. Um, and we also are looking at leash laws as something that came up for dogs. And so we're going to be asking the commission to help. Um, I know um, that it's a little bit of a stretch here, but we would really appreciate your help in this matter so that we can continue to say yes to these requests and make these important improvements for the community. Um, while still making sure that our staff is not diluted in achieving everything else we have on our plate. So you'll be hearing more from me, but I wanted to give you a heads up since we had a little bit of time tonight. So thank you very much.
Shannon, that's something that will be coming down the pike before the July meeting.
That's, yeah, that's correct.
What are the dates, just for planning purposes? Cause I know July fourth is on a Monday. So are you saying at the July council meeting?
The July eighteenth. Yes.
So that would be July fifth?
July eighteenth is the planning commission meeting.
Okay, but you were saying help with the council. So to attend council meetings, I'm confused.
So um, we'll be asking the commission to do some work. So I'll go more in depth about what we're asking of you at the July planning commission meeting. Um, so that you can help us present a summary to council, so that council can then um, do the hard work in making those policy decisions.
Oh, I understand. Thank you very much. And will that meeting uh, be also, well, that will be planning. So that will be at six o'clock, Anthony? On the eighteen?
That'll be during our standard planning commission meeting, starting at six P M on July eighteenth.
Thank you.
Uh, excellent segue provided by Shannon for me to say that Bob is going to be uh, doing the chair duties on the eighteenth of July. I will be um, unavailable at that time. And as far as I recall, that is going to be Bob's uh, last dance with us all. Is that still the, the plan, Bob? He hopes so. Have we identified a stable, secure and, and willing individual to fill Bob's um, long-hilled shoes? Amy?
He hasn't officially given his resignation for you guys to accept to allow me to get that open. So we have the formalities first. I will know.
Well, I, I
You have to have a vacancy to order that.
Can it be a, can it can be a, a timed vacancy of an intention to resign or does he have to? He has to do it before he goes out the door.
He can send me a letter with a date and time and we can use that to start the vacancy process.
July twenty twenty-four.
And, and, uh, actually July would be perfect because in August, we're going to be in Europe. So, yeah, so we're really, yeah, looking forward to that.
Well, I'd like
When time permits.
Formally recognize Bob's many years of service to the community and the city and just show appreciation. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys.
You are amazing.
Great group, great group.
We appreciate you, Bob. We'll have you just give Amy that formal designation at your earliest convenience so that she can reach out to the community so we can try to find somebody to fill your moccasins.
Okay, good.
All right. Uh, and last, I just have a note for Commissioner Nordstrom who had sent a, a brief inquiry to the community, uh, the, excuse me, city staff um, about some tree issues in the JR Meadows area. And uh, there was some follow-up. And so I will give the floor to this Nordstrom to share your findings.
Um, you know, they, they started the work on the um, apartment complex in the JR one. And um, my concern at the time over it was that a whole bunch of trees came down. And I was, I was concerned about that because at the meeting, there was a meeting that discussed that apartment complex. And at the time, I think it was said maybe by the developer that no more trees were coming down. And I did actually go back and look at the plans and Amy responded to me with, you know, like, no, this is still, this was in the plans. And I agree with her. Like I went back and looked at the plans and it, it was, the satellite images were a little weird because they weren't um, totally accurate in that like the, there were parts of it that were like current and not current. Anyway, so it was hard, really hard to tell from the satellite images whether more trees were coming down. Um, and my concern about that is not that the developer had the right to take down the trees because I, that was in the plan. But that um, the community was told that treat more, no more trees were coming down. And so my big concern is that, you know, as I think some of us have been hearing from the community, people are concerned about the building and the development and um, and that if the developer is going to say something's not going to happen and then it does, that's kind of the bigger problem, not whether they were allowed to take the trees down or not, but that I guess I wish it had been clearer. It's kind of shocking when a bunch of trees come down. And so I do think we as planning commission and that, you know, as sort of representatives of the city in that way, that it, it is important to keep trust with the community over these developments. And I think particularly JR one was kind of a big development that people weren't really prepared for in some ways. Um, and so I think um, I did, that's really kind of my comment is not whether anything was correctly done or incorrectly done, but being careful about letting the, you know, saying to the community, no more trees are coming down. When more trees are coming down, it would have been better if it had just been honest. Um, I just want to make sure we keep trust with the community over these things and that we are following through with what we say we're going to do and that people are reviewing these plans and that we are aware of what's happening. So that was really my comment about it. Um, was not, but that they did anything incorrect. And I appreciated Amy's response to me about um, you know, no, that was in the, in the plans, but we, we need, we need to be sure we're telling people accurately what's happening.
I just have a tree question and I hope that you and Suzie might refresh my memory. This is a different tree, but when we approved the little um, not town, is it town, town of, right behind here, two blocks, and they've just started putting the pudding and whatnot. Discussion about a very large Japanese maple of an armor. And we'd ask the developer not to excavate that Japanese maple. Do you remember that discussion? Tree's gone. So.
There was a plan to relocate that tree, if I recall correctly. Uh, has anybody, does anybody have the contact, contact information for them? Maybe that's probably a good place to start.
Well, this was my recollection is that we said that would be a good idea to relocate it or to save it somehow. And um, we just said, yay, that would be a great idea. But the fact is, is that the developer owned the tree and they could really do whatever they chose to do with it. So I think that's probably, I'm guessing that they, I'm guessing that they probably just disposed of it, to be honest. Um.
Is there anybody you could chat with? I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to say, oh, bad, bad unless we actually know, but is there, do we have any recourse or is it just a matter of a phone call and saying, hey, did it get relocated or? I mean, I would like to know. It's possible that it did. I just don't know. But I, when I was driving down that street, I was like, oh, that's gone.
From, from the, from the look of the um, of the construction after it was removed, I highly doubt that it was removed and saved. But yeah, I, I mean, it just didn't look like um, some, that somebody had come in and dug it. And it would have to have been professionally dug in that. But I think um, all of this brings up a larger point that we can maybe pursue as the code updates, that we value trees and that trees are a valuable resource in our community and that we um, begin to move towards um, really assessing those at the point of development. Like really thinking about, gosh, which ones do we want to save and at what size and maybe being more formal about um, doing some code updates there.
So what I'd add to that is that there's every, every city code with site design review, which is, which is what we're looking at for subdivisions and then future apartments have some sort of abstract uh, criterion that states that the planning commission shall consider uh, retention. retention of existing natural resources in balance with proposed development, which is obviously very vague. And doesn't really give any teeth to, you know, say you have to do this because the the developer can then say, well, we have to do this to build. So just, just to follow up essentially, if if there is a specific desire to look at preserving large trees, that's something that could be discussed at the development code update level for when we get to that point with the consultant. And maybe, maybe provide a little bit more emphasis than than what's in kind of the standard template that that most cities use for for subdivision review.
Thanks, Kyle.
All right. Well, I think that comment was very helpful from Commissioner Nordstrom. We have nothing else on our agenda for this evening. You'll have a full and fun and probably a four-hour-long meeting when I won't be there next month. But I will miss you all very, very much and look forward to seeing you the month after. And Bob, again, we appreciate your time.
That's just basically what he's saying, right? Bye bye. We'll be back with you in a minute. How important your call is.
Anthony very nicely got rid of the palm tree background just for you.
Yeah, right.
Just for you, Bob.
Okay.
Appreciate you very much. Floor is open for a German motion.
Thank you. I'll make a motion.
Suzie, number two. We got there. Perfect. I'm guessing it's all unanimous. Everybody wave their hands. Say bye, Bob. We love you.
I'm waving.
Have a great one, guys. Appreciate you. See you next month. Bye. You take care of that.